Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Villa Park City Council. I hereby call the meeting in order. Steve, will you please call the roll?
Okay, Councilman Miles.
Present.
Councilman Pitts.
Here.
Mayor Protem Jones.
Here.
Mayor Rosini.
Here.
Councilman Wu may be joining us. He's in another area right now, so he said he would try and zoom in as soon as he could, but in the interim, we'll start without him.
Sounds good. Thank you. Today, I will ask Councilman Pitts to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. Please assume your position of honor. Ready? If you can. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Just for record, Todd, our city attorney, is here on via Zoom, so he'll be here to answer any questions or whatever. But he is zooming in and he is online right now.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thank you. The Villa Park City Council and staff welcome into this meeting. We encourage your participation. If you wish to address the City Council, please complete and submit a speaker card to the city clerk before the scheduled meeting time. Speaker cards can be found outside the entrance to the City Council chambers. Speakers will be called in individually during the public comment section of the item they wish to speak on. Speakers will be limited to a time period of five minutes. Speakers were also able to submit comments in writing by 3:00 PM today. Those comments will be read aloud during the public comment section of the item. Presentations. This is going to be fun. Tonight's distinguished residents are Lou and Nancy Stremmich. Lou and his amazing wife Nancy have been residents since 1991. Together, Lou and Nancy have raised four children in Villa Park. Along with four children, they also have 13 gorgeous grandchildren. I recently had the opportunity to sit down with Lou and have lunch and talk about things. And the first thing you need to know about Lou and Nancy is that they don't seek recognition. They don't care for notoriety for their life's achievements, even though they should. In fact, it took some convincing to get Lou here tonight. This is a testament to the great humility of this man and his family. Lou has had a long and extremely successful career in the manufacturing and sales of various food and beverage products at a national level. As the CEO of Stremmich Heritage Foods, Lou created thousands of jobs in Orange County and across multiple states. His selfless leadership ensured that even during tough economic times, his customers and employees came first. While Lou was creating jobs and working to advance the interest of his company and its employees, Nancy was taking care of the home front. Nancy was an incredible mother, homemaker, and educator. Her kindness and generosity are unparalleled. As they say, behind every great man, there's an even better woman. Despite a hectic work and home life schedule, both Lou and Nancy found time to give back and help the community. Lou and Nancy were active in Villa Park Little League, Babe Ruth Baseball, NJB Basketball, and numerous other organizations in Villa Park and throughout Orange County. Lou passed his dedication to community involvement onto his son Sam alongside Sam's wife Julie. Both gave hours and hours to Villa Park Little League. Lou and his wife Nancy have not only been active in VPLL and other youth sports, but extremely active in philanthropic organizations. They have volunteered time, energy, and raised more than $100,000 for numerous charities, including Children's Hospital of Orange County, the Cystic Fibrosis Foundation, and numerous educational institutions. Let's all give Lou, Nancy, and the entire Stremmich family a hand for their involvement contributions to our community. Lou, would you like to come up and say a word or two? You don't have to. Right there. Press that magic button.
I want to thank you very much for this award for our family, and we appreciate it very much. We came here many years ago from New York after traveling over the years in Seattle and Portland and South Pasadena. And this was home. We knew from the first time we got here, the friends that we knew here and the friends that we made here. It's just a wonderful, wonderful place to raise your children. And as our friends have visited us from New York and Portland and Seattle, they're amazed at how friendly the people are here and the community relations with everybody and how wonderful everybody is and everybody waving in the morning. All the walkers, whether they know you or not, they're always waving. And so I just want to say thank you very much for this award. And it's a wonderful city, and we tell everybody all the time about it. And most of the time, people say, yes, we've heard about Villa Park and how nice it is. And you live there? And then we say, yes, we do. So anyways, thank you, folks, again. I appreciate it.
Thank you. If we could have you both come up and take a photo with the council?
Don't make a face.
Thank you. Well, on behalf of the American Red Cross of Orange County and our Board of Directors, we want to thank you, Mayor Rosini and City Council members for recognizing Red Cross Month with the proclamation. Red Cross Month has been celebrated since 1943. And the mission of the American Red Cross is to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies by mobilizing the power of volunteers and the generosity of donors. And throughout the month of March, we recognize the incredible people who give back through our lifesaving mission every single day. So 90% of our workforce is volunteers. So individuals in Villa Park every day roll up their sleeves to give blood. Timely, you're going to be hearing from some incredible residents who are talking about an upcoming blood drive, actually. We met in the hallway. And they also respond to home fires in the middle of the night for those who've been impacted, helping provide comfort and care. We support the military as well as taking CPR for state classes and providing that education. So because our workforce is volunteer, I brought a very special guest with me. Robin Moses is one of those incredible people who gives back through the lifesaving mission, and I wanted to have her share a few words as well.
Yeah. It's my honor to be a part of the American Red Cross. I joined about 12 years ago, thinking I would go somewhere where they have those disasters. I'd go to Kentucky for tornadoes, or I'd go to somewhere where they had floods. And I've done that. But the truth is, those disasters happen here. We have a home fire that displaces a family on average three to four times a week in Orange County. We have our mudslides. We have our storms. We had a hurricane this year. Who knew? So the group of volunteers who come together, who serve, who donate their time, their money, their gifts, who donate blood, who teach classes, all come together to serve our own community here at home. And thank you.
Thank you. We have a proclamation here. If you'd like to come up with counsel and take a photo.
Good evening. I reported out, well, actually, I'll get started with just the numbers. Total of 153 calls for service this time. About a 50-50 split between proactive and actual calls in our dispatch center, which I'm a big proponent of that type of split. One thing I was kind of disappointed with when I compared the numbers from last year, we did have quite a few more suspicious activity calls coming in our dispatch center last year, and they dropped, for whatever reason, they dropped this month. That could be completely anecdotal, but like I always say, if you see something, anything that's out of the ordinary, make sure you call us. It doesn't have to be a call to 911. I reported at our last meeting that we, I think we went several months without a burglary. Unfortunately, I cannot say that anymore. So a week after that meeting, we did have a burglary. Had some interesting circumstances behind it, but again, it's a reminder of these burglary crews are doing their homework, and they're watching for patterns of life. It could be a drone. It could be a camera. It could be your social media activity. You have to make sure you watch your pattern of behavior and make sure if you are going to be leaving, have a trusted neighbor watch that house for you, right? There's been some talk about, we talked about Wi-Fi disruptors or enablers or disablers, I should say. That is a thing, especially with systems and all of our gadgets now. Pretty much everything is wireless. If you can hardwire your cameras, I would encourage you to do that. I know it's not necessarily feasible nowadays. There's other tips that you can move your Wi-Fi system towards the middle of your house. That kind of gives them a little, some walls to go through. We're still kind of doing our homework on that topic. What you can do, aside from that, is just harden your home. The gates, the windows, put good window coverings on. Make sure those cameras are very visible, right? The more things you put as obstacles for these people, they will go to the easier target, okay? And I don't want to have any easy targets in Villa Park, okay? It did get a little noisy last Friday. Our deputies were doing some good work. They actually saw a couple of suspicious characters coming out of, they were coming from the direction of the shopping center here. They ended up having a lot of suspicious stuff in their vehicles, put that way. And they were throwing that stuff out the window as my deputy was trying to catch up to them. And as soon as my deputy tried to pull them over, he sped away, and unfortunately, he crashed into one of our Villa Park residents. Thankfully, she is okay. It did look really, really bad, and it made a lot of noise out on the main road there, but thankfully, everybody is okay. Both subjects are in custody. One of them was a parolee. These people do come to Villa Park. We don't have a big ball or moat around us here, so that's why it's so important. And in that particular case, one of our VP dads helped us actually apprehend the, and he was very professional. But made it really easy for one of my deputies to come and get the first guy. And it took us a couple of minutes, but we got the second guy, too. And like I said, thankfully, everybody involved is okay, and they won't be in Villa Park anytime soon. They're at our hotel in San Ana. I am open to any questions. Actually, if you want, I know it's kind of out of the ordinary, but we do have a public speaker card from a gentleman that was introduced to me by Councilmember Wu after I started growing this debacle on my face. He introduced me to a friend of his that runs, and you can see the boxes over here, a charity called Mustaches for Kids. We can wait until the public sign?
I would be honored if he came up right now, and I'm familiar with this gentleman, and he tried to convince me a couple of years ago to grow it, but...
I think you could grow a glorious mustache, sir.
Come on up.
Please.
For the record, this is Kerry Facer, I believe?
He's got some nice tasting cars, too.
Yes. Thank you for that wonderful introduction. I'm Kerry Facer, a business owner and a resident of Villa Park. My two kids go to Villa Park Elementary, so I was there that day. Thank you for the quick response. I am here on behalf of Mustaches for Kids. We are a 501(c)(3). We are in our seventh season of growing new mustaches. And what we do is we grow new mustaches for 30 days once a year. 100% of the money goes to one local children's charity. In just seven years, we have six seasons, we've already raised over $650,000. And I was hoping they would have stayed, so I could have tried to get them to participate as well, so I'll have to talk to them afterwards. But yeah, we sponsored, I've coached, I've volunteered, I've done all sorts of things. And I heard about this idea about eight years ago, and I thought, why not here in Southern California? There's a chapter, a friend of mine's been a part of, in Omaha. And so we started this, and we just got a group of individuals together, and really, our goal is trying to change the way men perceive, you know, charity service and giving back to our community. And it's about 60 to 80 of us that do this every year. So Jordan told me to come here, and I'm not exactly sure why, but in the meantime, we were able to recruit one new grower. I'm still hoping for one more.
You'll give me this year.
All right. We have two now. And what we do is we have five fun events. I brought some little cards or flyers. I was hoping I could maybe leave them in back before I head out. But I just wanted to share what we do and see if the city has any resources maybe available to us that we could further extend our reach and ask this year beyond tonight's meeting. So thank you again for your time.
Thank you, and thanks for what you're doing. We appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, excuse me. I would suggest that, you know, we have a fellow Rotarian sitting back there in the audience. Maybe introduce yourself to him.
There's two of them, but Rotary would be a good venue for you to spread the word.
Yeah, I appreciate it. We've been completely humbled, and we started this with just myself and a few individuals. And now we have, you know, close to 100 people doing this every year. We've also gotten a lot of local businesses and support and sponsors. And I'm excited this year. We have two key sponsors. One is called Ethica. It's a clothing company. And last year, they made a branded underwear just for our charity. In fact, there's a pair in each of those boxes for you. I now wear them every day. And they were able to donate. Ethica, they sold a bunch of pairs. They do a, one real charity kind of a pair every year, and they did it for us. They're back again this year. They donated $5,000 to our charity last year. This year, we just partnered with Happy Dad, who's going to be the official drink sponsor for our season. So they're going to, you know, support our cause as well. So we're looking for anything. So if you can't grow a mustache, you can donate or put us in touch with any maybe local businesses who'd be willing to help sponsor what we do. And your time is greatly appreciated, so thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Yeah. So we just selected our charity partner this year. It is called Beyond Blindness. So that is who we are going to support this year. So when we do all our fundraising, we will issue a grant, and that money will be going to Beyond Blindness. And some of the past charity partners have been Make-A-Wish, Chalk, Unlimited Possibilities, Miracle for Kids, just to give you an example of some of the local charities that we've supported.
That was my question, was what were some of the charities that you've donated to in the past, and what's your charity this year? But you just answered that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. So and then we do a open kind of application and bidding process that starts in really January of the year. We accept applications. Then we narrow it down to seven. Then we narrow it down to a final three. And we have a fun competition for the charities to come, you know, meet a lot of the people that are involved. And yeah, so. Good?
Awesome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any questions before I sit down?
Well done, sir. You did good work. We appreciate everything you're all doing. Next up, Fire Authority.
I don't know how you follow that, but can't. Sounds like an awesome charity, and yeah, I think I'll be in on that myself. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Mayor Protem and Council. Glad to be here in front of you again this evening. Since our last meeting on February 27th in the city of Villa Park, we had 123 units respond or dispatched to 43 incidents within the city of Villa Park. As I mentioned just before the meeting, we had a very successful open house on March 16th. We had just over 5,400 people from the various communities come out to see what we had on display there. It was a great day, and I'm sure we'll do it again next year. Not 100% sure if it'll be an annual or biannual event, but thank you for attending. It was great. Great to see you there, for sure. This month, our safety tip for the month is cooking safety. Cooking is the leading cause of home fires, fire injuries, and fire deaths in Orange County. OCFA would like to remind you to practice cooking safety and to protect yourself and others from cooking, obviously not having the kids too close. You know, we promote having, you know, a three-foot distance when you're cooking in the kitchen. Certainly try to come up with some ways. One of the calls we go out on multiple times, fortunately, it doesn't cause a lot of damage most of the time, but it's affectionately known as food on the stove for us. And typically, we'll know. The house might be charged with smoke, and as soon as we get off of the engine or truck, we can typically smell it. We still have to go up and open the windows and bring in fans and whatnot, blow the house out. But it's very common for people to leave a pot of something on the stove. Fortunately, like I said, most of them are not very damage-causing, but they can be. Certainly, if there's grease or oils involved, or if they go too long, they tend to spread to the cabinets, and then they start getting into the structural components of the home. So you can go to ocfa.org, like I always mention, every month for tips on cooking safety and then anything and many other items. If you go there, we've got our Kids Corner, which is just a great, it's got activities for kids. I want to remind the community as well, if you're certainly expecting your first child or additional children, or you're not familiar with how to install your car seats, we offer that as a service as well. You can go onto the ocfa.org website and schedule a meeting, and our community educators will meet you out in front of our headquarters, or come to maybe a station in the city to help you install that. And they're all licensed and certified in doing so. And that's all I have for you this evening, unless there's any questions from you.
Questions? Questions? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
We appreciate you. All right. Looks like we're done with presentations. Now we're moving on to public comments. At this time, we will review comments from the members of the public to address any off-agenda items within the subject-mannered jurisdiction of the council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items unless authorized by law. We will also be reviewing public comments on each agenda item. Steve, is there anyone that is present or wrote in from the public that would like to comment?
Yes, we do. We have Roy and Michelle Borelowitz. Is that? Okay.
Come on forward. Just go ahead and give us your name and your address if you feel comfortable doing that.
Hi, I'm Michelle Borelowitz. 9402 Brewer Way in Villa Park. Thank you for having us here today. We appreciate taking up some of your time to talk about a very important issue, as mentioned by the Red Cross, about blood donation. We're here today because on behalf of my nephew, who is 27 years old and was diagnosed six weeks ago with AML leukemia, and it is the most aggressive kind. And within one month, he has had seven blood transfusions, along with his third round of chemo. His only wish, for all of us in a way to help, is to give blood, because blood saves three people's life if you donate. So by donating, you will save three people's lives. And it won't go directly to him, but it'll go to the blood bank that needs to be stored. So my husband is going to talk about how Rotary and the Villa Park Women's League is partnering to put together a blood drive to get as many people as possible to donate blood on his behalf, but also on other family members of your own's behalf. So thank you.
Thank you, honey.
Yes. So the option was to go give blood, each of us once, or to get lots of people to give blood at the same time. So we are doing a blood drive right here in this room on May 10th. The Red Cross will be here. They did send a gentleman down to investigate this party check. They're conditioning the bathrooms, the whole location, made sure that it was safe to use. They'll be here at about 9:00 in the morning to secure the location. They start taking blood at about 11:00. We are recruiting people as aggressively as we can. We have this flyer that has a QR code on it that people can scan in their phones. It takes you directly to the website. Oops, I've got to pull the right one out. Here it is. It takes you to the website. You can sign up. It does ask you a few questions to make sure you qualify. It does turn out that for every three people to show up to donate, one is rejected for medicinal reasons. There's no age restriction, so anyone, there's a woman 102 years old, only gives blood all the time, as long as she can. 16 is the minimum age. 18, you have to get parental approval, so we are recruiting out of the high school. So far, we have 20 people signed up. We need 70. We need 70, so that 50 will give blood out of the two-thirds who can usually do it. So anything you can do to help us, if you can come down on the 10th, give blood if you can. But to welcome people who are doing it, we'll be here handing out cookies. It is obviously a sad reason that we're doing this, but we are going to try to make it a festive occasion. We've asked people if they want to bring pictures of loved ones who are battling cancer, to do that as well. We'll certainly do that for our nephew. If someone wants to do a memoriam for someone they've lost, to do that as well. If someone has conquered cancer, that's a celebration. I will share with you that we have three Rotarians, four actually, who collectively have donated 181 times, which is absolutely miraculous. We want to increase that number, obviously. Anything you can do to help us, we really appreciate. We have one logistical challenge. I had to promise the Red Cross that three parking places out front, excuse me, would be reserved for them, so they need to get their equipment in and out. I was told that's difficult to arrange. Anything the City Council can do to help us to secure three spots out front for the Red Cross, we'd really appreciate.
Unfortunately, that's not city property, so I would suggest you talk to the owners of Rockwells or whatever, and I'm sure they'd be willing to. And we'll put in a good word, but we don't have, it's not our property, so there's nothing we forsake.
Can we come down the night before and just take the spots and just put our cars there and secure them that way?
Steve?
In the morning?
Well, we talked about in the back, but I don't think that you were looking for in the back. They were looking for people to...
No, they have to be as close as possible. They've got a lot of equipment to bring in and take the blood. It's not light. They've got to carry it out.
I think you're probably onto a very good idea about something that you just said a few minutes ago, or a minute or two ago. But again, the city has no direct control over that. We will certainly lean on, with a friendly smile, anybody that we can. But I think your other plan is probably a better plan.
Okay, very good. Well, if you could all sign up, I'd really appreciate it. And if you can come down and visit us on the 10th, that'd be awesome, too. Thank you so much.
I would like to first give my sincerest thoughts to you and your family. Very difficult time. Cancer has taken a lot of friends, a lot of family, nearly taken two of my close family members. And I personally have donated several pints of blood in my life, and I've also been a marrow donor, which did save a life. So I'm all for what you're doing. I think everybody needs a lean in, and if possible, come down. Even if you're rejected, at least make the effort.
Exactly.
Because every pint counts. So I commend you. I will be there May 10th, 9:00 AM.
Thank you so much.
Please join me.
Do you have an extra flyer?
Yes.
11:00 AM.
If I can have it, I can post it on my social media. And then would you write your contact down? Because I'll ask the property owners if we can save a couple of spots.
Anything you can do to put, you know, email us out yourselves, contact anybody. Obviously, everyone knows you in the city. That'd be awesome.
And we just got it on the feed that goes out.
Oh, perfect. And it's from when to when?
It's on May 10th. It starts at 11:30, finishes around 6:30. Takes about two hours to set up.
Yep, I can be here.
6:30?
My handwriting's eligible, so she's...
And he's not even a doctor.
Roy, we also appreciate your volunteerism, you and your wife both.
Sincerely.
You're involved in a lot of different things around this community.
I'll let you know.
There's a pencil.
We're very appreciative of all the things that you all do for us.
And it's actually, this blood drive is co-sponsored by the Rotary and the Villa Park Women's League. So both of them are working to get the word out and sponsor it.
That's great. Well, thank you very much for what you're doing.
Third speaker is Chad Zimmerman.
Come on up, Chad.
This guy again. It's funny, I know, I'm here to speak about the same issue, so I'll try to say different things and in different ways, so that it's not the same speech over and over again. So let me start. Mayor Rosini, Mayor Protem, and City Council members, former mayors, thank you so much for taking the time to listen. I am speaking about the same issue, but I said I do something different, but there is a common theme. The common theme is safety. Same as last time, but different way. Safety is the thing that we have in common. It's our top priority. I'm going to try to read some of this, so I don't go off-topic a little bit. It's our top priority for our neighborhood and for our community. I believe when we were all campaigning for the position of city councilman, there were two things recognized as most important: safety in the city and keeping Villa Park the same as it's always been. Now that we have a traffic study for the intersection, that's the one that was released March 6th, I just want to highlight a couple elements of that study, and then we can talk about it, I think, next month, more. But I do want to just say a couple things. On page 17, Section 5, there's a multi-way stop guidance that's given. And per the California Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, Section 2B07, a multi-way stop control is typically used where the volume of traffic on the intersecting roads is approximately equal. This is the case for Nichols Avenue and Serrano Avenue. Great. So that's what it says in the study. It says that this... So that's what it says in the study. It says that this intersection is a good candidate, and that it's explicitly written as such. So, good start. There are some conclusions that I don't necessarily agree with. There's some illogical stuff. But it then goes on to list the criteria for adding a stop sign. And in each case, it reinforces an overwhelming point of view, which is this. If you have crashes or accidents, if you have speed issues, if there are turn conflicts, if you need to control pedestrian vehicle conflicts, to put it another way, if there's any risk, the solution is to add stop signs. So, we've had stop signs there, and they're removed. So what I'm curious about is, what are the criteria to remove a stop sign? I don't see that anywhere out there. So that's something that is still an open question. I'm hoping I can get an answer to. But the entire point of that section of the code is to point out that stop signs make intersections safer, and stop signs are the answer. For more than 40 years, we've kept that intersection safe with the three-way stop. And this study makes the illogical jump by then saying that because there have been no accidents, we do not need to add a stop sign, when it's the existence of the stop signs which has made the intersection safe. But on the watch of this city council, that intersection has become more dangerous. And I've been warning about this for a couple of months. As time goes on, drivers are going faster and faster through that intersection. It is becoming more unsafe. It is the opposite of what we all ran on for this city. It is the opposite of what this city needs. We need safety in that intersection, and the remedy, the answer, even in this study, that recommends something totally different, they tell you the answer, add the stop signs back. I would love to see those stop signs return. It is the smart, safe thing to do for our community. I only bring this up today, I wasn't even going to talk today, because yesterday, I'm walking my dogs. I walk south on Serrano, car makes a turn, almost hits me. An accident is likely to happen there. I am telling you when it does, that is something that we don't want to see in the city. The stop signs help prevent that. So please bring them back. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve, do you have anybody else?
No, we don't. I just need to point out, in the study, it's, the criteria says, and I'll read it verbatim, "Where traffic control signals are justified, the multi-way stop is an interim measure that can be installed quickly to control traffic while arrangements are being made for the installation, the traffic control signal." That would not be a stop sign, that would be a signal. That, we are not intending to put a signal there. So, and just in context, as you read it, we gotta, I just want to put that in context for the reference.
Thank you for your clarification, I appreciate that.
About the second paragraph?
The first paragraph, it says point A of the criteria.
Okay, so right before that?
Right.
That's the second paragraph. You want, that's the one that I read.
Right, and I'm just saying.
There's nothing about a stop signal.
The criteria talks about where traffic control signals. So, I don't want to debate, I'm just saying, the code says that, so that's what we're referencing.
There are four criteria there that you can go through, but that's not related to what I was talking about.
Okay. Thank you for your clarification on that, Steve. Thank you for your comments.
And I would, we did have a certified traffic engineer take the study, that the, for the record, the results, the initial action to take, the sign, was discussed with traffic engineers and with our, with our own engineer, as part of development of the streets project that was done and included Nichols and Serrano. So there was done with consultation with professional engineers, and looked at that, and the study was done by an independent engineering firm.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that clarification, we all do. All right, seeing that we have no more public comments, let's move on to the first public hearing. Now we will move into our agendized public hearings. Our first hearing is the review to waive reading in full of all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda. I will now open the hearing. Steve, can you give the staff report, please?
So, if I could, because it does not appear that Councilman Wu is, we can expedite the meeting, oh, is he on?
He's on.
He's on. Now we gotta take verbal votes at this point. But I was gonna say, if he's not on, never mind, moot point. All right. Item number one is our reading of full of all ordinance resolutions and meeting minutes, and that's what we do each month to expedite the movement of our agenda. So with that, we'd recommend approval.
Thank you. Any comments? Any members of the public who want to comment on this? No? Do I have a motion?
Moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
No, we have to take a vote manually, so we'll start with Councilman Wu.
Yes.
Councilwoman Miles?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pitts?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Racini?
Yes.
And that passes 5-0.
Thank you. Item two, our next hearing is the first reading of the wall and fences code amendment. I will now open the hearing. Steve, please give the staff report.
Thank you. This is, as you indicated, the Walls and Fences Amendment Code, or municipal code. Right now, articles, it's 23-6.11 and 23-25 contain zoning regulations for walls and fences. The purpose of our effort here was to try and consolidate those and bring those into alignment consistency. And I will have, Justin Urbansky will be a presentation here. For the record, when it's appropriate, we did receive one email, which I'm prepared to read into the record, should the council want to do that.
I spoke to the person, she would like the email read into the record.
So whenever you want me to do.
That's fine. If you wouldn't mind, go ahead and do that now, and we'll move forward.
Says, "Dear City Council, it is amazing to see the council bringing the issue of fences and walls for code amendment. I have questioned and been told that vertical tall shrubs, trees in front of houses were not against our ordinances, that they didn't have a negative visual impact, nor were they a safety issue, and they were not, per se, a wall. I have lived in Villa Park now for 12 years, and each time I brought this issue to council, which has been at least three times, I was told the shrubs were okay, grandfathered in, and it isn't a wall, but is for privacy. All the while, never did the city think that their own ordinance has stated that you can't have over a six-foot fence or a three-to-four-foot privacy fence, but felt trees and shrubs did not, didn't do the same thing. So now council would like to change the ordinance, because more and more houses are putting up trees, tree walls in front of their homes. Why change now? Homeowners have not already planted trees, homeowners that have not already planted trees get to keep theirs, but going forward, homeowners whom plant have to now abide by certain heights. Either all conform or this new ordinance is mute. There is a few homes that have a lot of corner lots, so the homes aren't on a corner that have higher than six-foot tree bushes vertically across their whole front yard. Will, they have to cut them, question mark. The home on Santiago just put trees that, in that already six feet, will those need to be removed or cut, question mark? Or do they get a pass, question mark? Will the home of, with chain-linked six-foot fence on Santiago, need to remove it, question mark? It has been there for years, with it not being fully covered by the flowering bush. The home on this corner of Center and Taft, four-way stop sign to see walkers is impeded with the trees, bushes that line that property, south side of Taft, heading west towards Villa Park High School. But your new ordinance would let that corner have 20-foot trees, question mark. How about the home on Santiago that council made homeowner remove fence, because the height plus maybe not getting permission to build, but in hindsight, plant walls around the city are higher than wall they had built? Excuse me. I understand that we don't have homeowners associations, but we did have these ordinances on the books, and they were ignored or interpreted as to not include trees. Plus, are you protecting the resident whom owns several houses in the vicinity of Sterling and Santiago, question mark? So those that get grandfathered, but others don't, I feel there won't be architectural harmony in the city. Plus, the homes whom get grandfathered in over six feet, will they be held to maintain, maintenance for aesthetically pleasing environment, question mark? Homeowners only prune to a certain height, and then their wall of trees look unpleasant, unless professionally done. Is the city changing this ordinance because the aesthetics of the neighborhood is changing, and the once sprawling, unique homes of Villa Park are being covered up by tree walls, question mark? I am not against homeowners having privacy walls in their backyards, but if the city has always had fence height ordinances, then tree walls in front of homes should have been held to that same standard, and the city should not grandfather in any past plantings of trees. I will be curious to see how other residents feel, as well as how Villa Park council members respond. Sincerely, Dana Reed.
Thank you. And we have comments by Justin? Go ahead, please.
So yeah, I just want to go through this presentation, summarizing some of the main changes. Next slide, please. So, kind of as Steve mentioned, there's three reasons why we're bringing this ordinance before you. First is to rectify discrepancies between the old and new code sections. So in 2009, the city passed the new ordinance for wall and fence regulations, but the old one from the 1980s was not removed. So there are discrepancies between the two code sections, and we want to delete the old code from the 80s and consolidate it and update it with the newer one from 2009. Second, we want to remove ambiguities, typos, and confusing language from the code. And finally, we want to better address the needs and concerns of Villa Park residents. And our recommendations are partly based on conversations and the concerns that we have frequently with Villa Park residents, as it pertains to parts of our wall and fence code around privacy, noise, and safety. Next slide. So I'll summarize the major changes, but a full list can be found in the redlined Exhibit C. So the first proposal that we're proposing is to allow increased height for walls and fences along busy street corridors. And this is based on an engineering traffic study that we had in 2014. The proposal for the increased wall and fence height in the front yard setback would be up to six feet, and it would be along Santiago Boulevard from Meats to Lemon, Center Drive from Lincoln to Serrano, Taft, and Villa Park Road. And we would consult with OCFA and the police to ensure that they wouldn't have any concerns with this, should you guys motion this forward to the second reading. Next slide, please. And I also want to be clear that, as you can see in the clear view zone, we would not allow anything over, we're not proposing to allow anything over three and a half feet tall for safety reasons, as in discussion with our engineers, because if there's a two-way intersection, it is unsafe to have tall walls or fences in that area, as it impedes vehicular line of sight. So this next issue is for shrub and hedge walls. Again, this would not apply to the clear view zone, where they would be limited to three and a half feet tall. But candidly, we've had a really big issue with enforcement on this. A lot of people have been planting these tall hedge walls and shrubs in their front yard, to kind of not put a fence up, but to use it in place of a fence. And our current code says that hedge walls and shrubs have to have the same height as walls and fences. So if somebody plants them right now, right in their front yard, it can only be three and a half feet tall. But it's just kind of gotten away from us, because there's so many properties that have had these for a long time, and that are planting them now. And so enforcement has been a big issue with this. We're proposing to allow shrub walls up to six feet tall within the front yard setback, to better address the needs of the Villa Park residents, because we have had a lot of people wanting to plant shrubs and hedge walls in place of a wall for privacy and safety concerns within their front yard setback. Next slide, please. Lighting is another issue that's not been addressed in the code. We're proposing to add some language around lighting. We're proposing to allow lighting fixtures up to two feet tall on top of walls and fences. Right now, we don't have any language around that, so it's a bit ambiguous as to whether or not it's allowed or not. We're also adding language that allows us to further review lighting for negative lighting impacts to neighbors. And if there, if anybody's proposing lighting in the 20-foot clear view zone on the corner, we are also adding language to potentially allow additional review for that if we deem there to be a safety concern. Next slide, please. Driveway gates are another issue that are not addressed in the code. And so, after discussions with our engineers, we have deemed that a 16-foot driveway setback, or setback from the flow line would be appropriate for new driveway gates. 20 feet if the property fronts a sidewalk or pedestrian path, and that would give the vehicle enough space to exit the road while waiting for the gate to open. And we have also added language in the code that says that the gate cannot open in towards the street, it must open towards the property or slide. And we're also proposing to add a new material to the wall and fence section. A lot of people have been wanting iron craft fencing, it's a newer material that's been added. So we are proposing to allow that to be within the front yard setback as well. Next slide, please. So some more miscellaneous changes. We're proposing to add an additional street with eight-foot tall rear and side yard fences, and that street would be Cannon. Currently, there is a list of properties fronting certain busy streets that are allowed, rear and side wall fences up to eight feet in height. Cannon is a very busy and noisy street, so we're just proposing to add that to that list. And then finally, as I said earlier, the old code section, we are proposing to delete and consolidate it into the newer code section from 2009. Next slide. So that is my presentation. So if council could please provide comments and feedback to city staff for the first reading, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
So, this is the first reading, which means that the council obviously is not approving anything in final form. It would have to come back for a second reading. For purposes of the first reading, if you were to make changes, we would come back with those changes incorporated into that. My recommendation, if the council wanted to delay or hold on any of these, and then contemplate further, or get more input, we would continue the first reading and not hear it, not vote on it tonight, which would allow us not to have to publish it again. We could then come back at a later date and avoid the extra expense of posting, publishing it in the papers, et cetera, that we incur at this point. So, but we are obviously open to any changes that the council wants, and we're both available to answer questions.
Any other members of the public?
We, just the one email we received. I have not received any other correspondence.
Mayor Protem.
Yes, so after looking this over, in general, I am, you know, supportive of making the changes for lighting and, you know, adding driveway gates. But you do lose me on the shrub and hedge walls. I really don't mind them. I think that, you know, the greenery adds to the city, and quite frankly, I have no appetite for taking the time of our code enforcement to go around and measure trees. I just feel that something like that can get out of hand very quickly. So, I feel that the proposed six-foot height limit for the shrub and hedge walls should be removed, and we allow shrub and hedge walls in all setback areas without height limitations, with the exception of the 20-foot corner view area, and where the fence height is limited three and a half feet for vehicles' safety reasons and for our own liability.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I have a couple questions. First one, the corner clear view zones that are set to the three and a half foot height, I'm talking about shrubs. So, those corner clear view zones set to three and a half foot height for shrubs, does that include any of the homes that are listed on the streets, like Santiago going around to Lemon, and then Center, all the way Serrano and Lincoln? So, any of those homes that are on the busy streets, would they also have to conform to the three and a half foot height for the shrubs?
Yes.
Okay. That's the first question. Second thing is, I also feel, I can get behind, you know, the lighting features, I can get behind driveway setbacks and, you know, adding material that wasn't listed, with the gates opening towards the home or sliding, that's common sense, logical. But I am having an issue with the green shrubbery, you know, making that set to a specific height. I personally, you know, both in 2018 and 2022, you know, my big thing about making sure that we keep Villa Park how Villa Park is, I think homeowners really appreciate the flexibility of being able to do with their property aesthetically, whether it's planting a green tall, you know, juniper, or whatever it might be. So, but I also can understand from a point of view of safety. I personally would like to maybe perhaps continue this item, to get some data. Kind of important to know what home specifically this might actually impact. I understand, you know, we might grandfather in a whole bunch, but what about any of the ones that would be on the corners that might have an issue with that clear view zone? So, like I said, I agree, I can get behind a lot of it. The beauty of Villa Park is, you know, property owner rights. And to me, if somebody plants a wall of green shrub, I don't mind it. So, but I think the data is important. So, if no one else has any comments, I would.
I think we're gonna have some more comments.
Yep.
Let me just see. Councilman Pitts, do you have any comments, sir?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Okay.
You know, I agree with you all about the lighting and what we've discussed so far. I think it's, we also have to realize too, that if someone goes out and plants a bush or a tree, it's gonna grow. And my concern would be, to an earlier point, about code enforcement. Once that tree or bush or whatever gets above the three and a half foot mark or the six-foot mark or whatever it may be, you know, who's gonna ride around and check all that and make sure, you know, we've been more of a reactive versus a proactive city, and it creates some nightmarish situations for us in terms of financials of having somebody just go around and check trees. So I, I, I agree with the continuance to look at this a little bit further. I guess the question is, why did the fences come up? Why is this, do we feel the need to even address this in the ordinance?
I think we've had, like you mentioned, we've had a number of inquiries from residents, et cetera, where people, where people already have these things. And people say, well, the neighbor across the street. We've had variances have been requested and actually turned down by this council with people pointing out across the street, we have those things. So we're trying to bring it in consistent to a code and be responsive to citizens' concerns. So again, we're bringing this forward to the council consideration, and we defer to your, your judgment about what you want.
I was just curious about how many requests we get for these kinds of things.
Pretty regularly. When we tell them their fences can only be a certain height, they'll say, well, I'm gonna put in a wall, a wall of trees or whatever, whatever they feel. So that's pretty common. We do not have restriction, we do not have a landscape approval plans or anything like that that they have to do. But, but people will typically say, oh, I'll just put a wall of trees in or whatever. And so we're trying to let the council address the issue and give us the direction they want this to be, so.
Well, I think too, I think we need to distinguish between a wall, define what a wall is versus someone just planting some trees and bushes and flowers out in front of their house. You know, we need to have some distinction, I think, about that, because I got a little bit confused about, you know, what's, what's good and what's not good from that standpoint, because I can plant two or three trees on the property, but it's not a wall, you know, and bushes in between them and flowers in between that. And it looks all nice and so forth and dresses up the property, but does that defined as a wall or is it just shrubbery?
Well, basically, I think we, we define it as a very nebulous, it's shrubs and hedges functioning like walls and fences. And I think you go around the city and you'll see many of them do. So it's, it's interpretation, it's subjective, but how, you know, the exact definition would be hard to say, how many per foot you're gonna have, what kinds of trees are gonna be, et cetera. So right now, it says shrubs and hedges functioning like walls and fences. And that's what we were trying to address and dealing with, so.
I applaud you for trying to get some consistency in our ordinances. That's, that's a good thing. But it's just, this one's a difficult one, I think, for all of us in terms of how we, how we can approach this, the lighting and, you know, driveway gates and stuff. I agree with the rest of them, you know, that's okay. But when it comes to the shrubbery, I, I think we need to think about it a little bit more and see what, what else we can come up with.
Councilman Wu, do you have any comments before we circle back to everybody else and I provide mine?
Thank you for the time. I, I agree with so far everyone's opinion. I think it's needed, just making our codes all inform. My, my concern regarding the hedges and shrubs, more the height, it's, personally, I just feel if we give unlimited height, it becomes too much, i- in the sense everyone, I mean, all the houses is being blocked off. I certainly respect the privacy. I don't think six feet is enough for privacy. I do think that we should increase that height, but I, I don't know what height it should be, but I don't, I don't feel comfortable to be unlimited. And I do agree with Councilmember Pitts. We have, we need to have better understanding, define what is tree and what is hedges or shrubs. You put a whole bunch of trees together, allow it to grow, it becomes wall. I think that's what the purpose here. And I just think we, we should have certain definition, a clear definition, and also height. I, I do feel that we should increase the six feet, though.
Okay. I'm gonna thank you very much for your comments, and I concur with some of what you've said as I understand it. My comments are this, I, I think we owe a debt of gratitude to staff for going out and try to clean up some, a whole lot of different things, point in different directions, and take a common sense approach to dealing with some inherent issues, just with the geography and the historic nature of our city and how it was developed. I personally think that a hedge that functions as a wall, when I say a wall, I mean, you literally cannot see through it, that's a problem. I think that you should have the opportunity to paint your house whatever color you want, plant whatever trees you want to plant, provide, and I think this, this attempts to provide some guardrails, but it doesn't tell you what make or model of a car you're driving. It doesn't tell you what speed to drive at. It just provides some guardrails so that we can remain an open and safe community so that when our sheriff's deputies are on patrol or our other first responders, they can look into the front portion of your yard. The sides and the back, I think that that should be relatively unlimited, me personally. I think that further study is needed. I would offer that a continuance at this point in time is probably a good idea, so we can get more community input, so we can all take a deeper dive into this and define some of those ambiguities, such as when is a tree or a shrub in a line? Is it, as I said, where there's literally no light that you can see through? You can't see inside of the, the front property area? Or is it a staggered set? I, I think those, some of those ambiguities have to be cleaned up. And at this point in time, I'm gonna go ahead and make that motion. If you have further comments, then I welcome them. But I, I make a motion that we continue this if, if that's what's needed.
I have a further, another comment.
Go ahead.
So I, I think in, in the continuance, hopefully, we can get some, if it's approved, we can get some data back. But, but here's something that concerns me, and I appreciate also staff looking into this and trying to get uniformity. But I know that there are some residents that probably will be very angry because there were some variances that were denied, because, you know, they, they started building it without permission, but if they had done it, if this passes, they wouldn't even need the permission. And we've made people take fences down or take, you know, gates down. And so I'm, I guess in this continuance, for me, it's important to distinguish between if this goes forward, are we along those busy streets that were mentioned from Santiago from Meats all the way around to Lemon, and then I think it was Taft, and it was Center from Lincoln to Serrano? Anyone in their front yard could have a fence up to six feet? I think that, that's something that has to be separate. And then as far as I, you know, disagree about the difference between a shrub and a bush and, and a tree, because what I think we're gonna be doing is we are, we are creating a problem that doesn't exist from the point of view of if you drive around the city, and I did, there are certain homes that perhaps have very well-established tall shrubs or whatever, all the way along the side property between two homes, right? So now, and, and I'm not gonna say the street, you know, in public, but this has a hedge that's well above six feet, and it goes right out to the property line with two driveways. So what prevents us from then saying, oh, well now, because we can't have, you know, in our front, and this is their side, but I can't see you pulling out, and so now, you know, where do we stop? Where do we draw the line in how much we're gonna control and regulate how people can grow their hedges or whatever? So I've seen that a couple places through the city, and I think that it's gonna spill over, and we're gonna end up, we're creating a problem, in my opinion, that doesn't exist yet by specifically trying to identify the difference between shrub and tree and bush, and if it's, you know, how tall it can be in the front. So I second your motion for a continuation, but really hope that we can get some specific details on homes that this would potentially impact. And even so much as maybe a list of, of people that we denied a variance, because I feel like we're gonna get some angry residents that would come back if this passes. And I know there was a home on Los Flores who said that they were gonna put a big green privacy thing all the way around that's gonna be above six feet. So I know that, that, you know, we have approved things like that in the past, and I guess I'm not understanding why we can't still continue with a variance if somebody in fact wants to build a wall taller than that. I just think we need more information.
Well, I, I think that's universal, that we, that we do need more information and that, but staff is obviously trying to take into consideration. There have been some folks that have literally tried to buy up small corners of Villa Park and create their own little enclave or, or compound, and that's not necessarily what's in the best interest of Villa Park. But I, I, I think everybody's comments are on point here. And absolutely, just give me one second if I can finish. And I appreciate Councilman Wu's comments. Go ahead, Councilman Pitts.
The only, the only thing I was gonna add is, I think that this council and previous councils have done a wonderful job following the ordinances that we were given and we were using at that particular time, and based our decisions on those types of things. Going forward, we recognize that we have to have some type of guidance and direction for the council and for the city and for our, our teams. So I think the past decisions were the best decisions that possibly could have been made, whether they were ones people wanted to hear or not. I can't help that, but we were all going by the guidance of what was in place and what we were able to use at the time to make our decisions. So to go back and try to reverse decisions and all that kind of stuff because we're changing it, I don't know that that's prudent for this council or anybody else. So I just caution us about looking, looking back instead of looking forward. That's all. Thank you.
I appreciate your comments.
Point of clarification, I wasn't, I wasn't suggesting that we go back and reverse decisions.
Okay. Thank you. Please.
Yeah, and just as, you know, to Councilwoman Miles's point, you know, this council actually wanted that homeowner on Los Flores to put up greenery because it would make it more attractive to the neighbors. So I, I think, you know, we're all kind of in favor of the greenery. But just, just to clarify my previous point about the corners, you know, I would, like other council members have said, like to see some specification as far as which locations in particular, you know, you feel that the sightlines are impeded by these hedges or trees, because like Councilwoman Miles said, I also drove around Villa Park, and for the most part, even when there are like tall trees around, I have felt that there's enough distance there that there's plenty of visibility. So I'm kind of curious as to, you know, where city staff thinks that we might need that three and a half foot. So if you could provide that guidance, that would be great.
Yeah, and I've been thinking, thank you for all your comments. I've been thinking about, it could be maybe a situation where the engineers review it on a case-by-case basis, something like that. If we don't want the 20-foot line of sight distance, maybe it could be depending on each property. And I was also thinking about the definition of a hedge and shrub wall. There is a definition in the code. I can't remember off the top of my head, but I believe it defines it as a thick growth of shrubbery or plants. But I can definitely provide that to all of you next meeting.
Yeah, I think that would go a long way to, to help us out, and I appreciate your comments. And again, my comments related to, were a reference or analogy to automobiles, please drive the speed limit. But you, at least when you're building a home or, or purchasing a home, you can paint it, you can do all kinds of different things that you wouldn't see in an Irvine that do make our community unique. Now, obviously, please don't take that out of context, so. Anyways, it sounds like we have unanimous here on a continuance. We have a motion, we have a second.
Need to take a vote.
If you would mind, please call the roll on the vote.
Councilman Wu?
Yes, for continuance.
Councilwoman Miles?
Yes.
Councilman Pitts?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Rossini?
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously for a continuance on Item 2. We'll now move on to the consent calendar, Items 3 through 11. Now we will consider our consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine and are usually enacted by one motion approving the recommended action listed on the agenda. Any member of the city council, staff, or the public may request an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion or separate action. Councilmembers, are there any items from 3 through 11 that you would like to remove from the consent calendar? Okay, all right. Anybody from the public writing on that?
We've received no input.
Okay. We have no public input, we have no request to remove anything. May I please have a motion?
Some of, second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Please call the roll.
Councilman Wu?
Yes.
Councilwoman Miles?
Yes.
Councilman Pitts?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Rossini?
Yes.
Passes 5-0.
Thank you. Item 12, moving on to new business, our first item of the approval of consultant contracts for building and safety services and code enforcement services. Steve, please give the staff report.
So this is a little bit of sadness on my part, because Bill Tarrant will be leaving service of the city on June 10th. So we're in the waning days. One of the things we've talked about and, and working with Bill for the last eight years, I've come to the realization there is no Bill Tarrant else that we can just hire out there that knows the city, knows the people, et cetera. Bill serves as our building official, our, he does plan checks, he does code enforcement, and he also serves as a building official. So he basically wears four hats at any given time, which is a pretty challenging role, and there aren't many like him. He's, I keep telling him, he's a dinosaur, and he says, look in the mirror. But anyway, as far as it goes, we decided that our best approach would be try and see, at Bill's recommendation, go out and see what consultants would do. So we have, we went out to bid, and we have, we received a number of responses and from very good firms. And they all, we gave them the option of bidding on some or all of those functions. We then narrowed it down to four that we felt were in the top group based on Bill's assessment of their content, of their responsiveness, of their professionalism, and who they were recommending, the types of individuals and staff they would have assigned to that. The good news is there were four very qualified candidates. The bad news, in, in the end of the day, it's gonna cost us about $12,000 more a year, but we budgeted, assuming increase, but it is an increase. With that being said, there is also a subsequent long-term unfunded liability, because we no longer carry the pension of anyone who is working on consultant contracts. It's a very effective model that's served us well for engineering and served us well for planning, and we feel that's something that, that model is something we can rely on. So each of the firms, and I will be very specific, they've all met with us at different panels we had, we checked references, we called other cities, I called cities, talked to them. We have, expect to have a termination clause on, for no cause, on the city's behalf if they're not performing at our level. Likewise, if services change and we need more of something or whatever, they will provide us that additional service at the same rate they've quoted. So with that being said, we had, the four top firms were Foreleaf, Bureau Veritas, Interwest, and VCA. All four are very qualified firms, and we were very fortunate to have them. We are not a very large contract for anybody, so that's, it's sort of like, several of them referred to us as sort of flagship contracts where they could say, well, we have that neighborhood in Villa Park, and people know what Villa Park is, and if you're doing building official or those kinds of things. In doing this, one of the firms, Foreleaf, when they came in, it struck me right away is, these guys are so pro, are so professional in the code enforcement, they're, they're like in their own category, they're that good, and their background, their expertise, and that's was, what came across to me is, they shouldn't be doing the others, they should be doing that one function. So with that regard, Foreleaf was the, one of the lowest bids in, there were two that were the same fir, at the same rate, but Foreleaf is, was consistently a stronger resumes and, just practices, how they work with staff, how they, you know, we talk to them about our passive versus aggressive and our role and what we believe code enforcement should be in Villa Park. They were the most responsive in my mind. The other one, it came down to two other firms. VCA had the lowest bid. They're both local firms, either in Irvine or in Orange, the two top on that, for a building official, building inspector, and permit technician. VCA was the firm that we actually have dealt with on times, because they do some of our plan check. So we feel that they are probably the firm that we go, and Bill knows the individuals involved. It's interesting, because Bureau Veritas and VCA were both going to subcontract to the same individual. same individual to do some of these functions. So it's a hot market out there. Like I said, there's not many bills out there. But what we're talking about, just for the record, building official is probably like four hours a month, five hours a month, where you just, you know, to sign official documents, do certain things. The building inspector and permit technician are the most, some of the most important functions we have. And that's where somebody comes in the front counter, has those questions. So one of the questions we had on all of them, on all services, all four, was continuity. I don't want different people coming in next week and a contractor coming in, said, well, the guy last week said I could do this, and now you're saying I can't do that. They would all assign people, just like we have engineers assigned here from NV5 or Ray assigned to us in planning. So that's kind of the model we're looking at. And all of them acknowledged that that would be specific individuals that would be assigned to a city. The advantage, the distinct advantage that contracting does provide us, and I will tell you, when Bill goes on vacation or is sick, we shut down our building department. We just don't have a resource. That's unfortunate if you're a contractor or resident working on a timeframe or a budget or trying to get things done, move into your house or do whatever. So we, the contractors have all agreed, they will bring in people to function while there's downtimes. So that's an advantage we have. It's also something that we have said, we want hours on the front counter, we want services. Now, you're not going to find someone who has a history, but Bill has offered to work for the next two months, so that's why we're here, to try and get some crossovers, there's some training that can be done and allow us to have some double timing, if you will, where we can have the respective firms that are chosen work for us in that capacity and Bill be there on their, you know, on their shoulders saying, don't worry about that, this is what you need to worry about these, and here's the history of that residence or whatever. Bill also said that if, and never needed, he's not going away, he could always answer questions or whatever by phone. But Bill, Bill's planning to enjoy retirement, so he said, don't make too many phone calls. But anyway, with that, we are recommending Forleaf to handle our code enforcement, and VCA would handle building official, building inspector, and permit tech. Again, the contract services will cost about $151,000, $36,000 for code enforcement, $115 for contracting building and safety services, et cetera. It's about a $12,000, $13,000 increase. We had sufficiently budgeted that because we knew the cost probably might go up, so we budgeted that. So it's already in your budget for this year, and we would incorporate it going forward. What we've talked about is each of the firms, I don't want them to come in and say, hey, we're going to change rates and do this and that. They've built in a 3% cost increase, and that's what we're locked in, and they've guaranteed, they've said that that's what they'll do. Building and safety, the service of VCA, consistent with everyone else, has asked for an increase based on mutual agreement because their CPI may be high or low, and I don't want to guarantee them an increase or not increase if they're not going to get it, if there's not warranted. So VCA is slightly different, but we're recommending those two firms, and we would be open to any questions.
Councilmember Wu, do you have any questions, sir? Comments?
Not at the moment.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions or comments? Ladies first.
I just wanted to see if you would comment specifically on why not just go with VCA for all four since VCA and Forleaf both are at $85. So I know you touched on it, but...
Yeah, so again, two reasons primarily. One, the first reason that's overwhelming, when you meet with them, you realize how strong Forleaf is in code force and their experience and what they're doing elsewhere. Some of their systems are things that would be very advantageous for us and very time-saving. Secondly, sometimes it's not wise to have the same person who's doing the building official and building inspections check to see if there's enforcement problems. Sometimes it's better to have a separation of powers, if you will. So to me, it kind of, as we talked about, it kind of makes a lot of sense. I teased Bill about having to sort of change hats at times and sort of say, well, you approve that, now you're going to turn around and tell them they're doing something wrong, whatever. So it's better to have a little bit of, I don't want to say internal conflict, but oversight or cross balances, if you will. So I'm very comfortable with that, I think that's a good model to go. Now, we have a different firm doing our engineering services, a different firm doing our building services and code enforcement and their planning. So we have four sets of eyes looking at something very differently and probably to our best interest.
Thank you.
Any members of the public that request to comment on this?
We've received no input.
Okay. Councilmembers, any further questions? Councilman Pitts, go ahead, sir.
Just a quick question. You said vacation coverage, is that included or would they bill us?
The rate is, would be the same rate. So basically, they will bill us a flat rate for that person.
Okay.
So when they come in. So for those services, it would be the rate that they've quoted.
Okay.
So we're not going to get in and say, bill us somebody twice the rate or something along those lines.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. You're welcome, sir. Thank you for your comments. We have no public, we have no further public comment. Councilmembers have asked their questions. May I please have a motion on this?
So moved.
I have a motion, sounds like I have a second. Please call the roll, Steve, for a vote.
Councilman Wu?
Yes.
Councilwoman Miles?
Yes.
Councilman Pitts?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Rossini?
Yes.
Thank you.
Passes five zero.
Next item of new business, item 13, our next item of new business is regarding NV5 Incorporated and Engineering Contract. Steve, please give the staff report.
Thank you. We've had NV5 for a number of years. Before that, they were Civil Source, and we've had a number, very successful engineering career. Our five-year agreement with us expires July 1st, so we have to come back in a negotiation process. We have to come back and sort of deal with what's going to come forward. I've talked to their principals, and I said, you know, look, I'm interested in maintaining a relationship. We have the continuity that we've been searching for, et cetera. And they've been very accommodating with regards to trying to provide personnel, you know, that we want and to work with the city well, et cetera. So I said, you know, we both sort of came to agreement, hey, look, a five-year agreement, and we would cap theirs at 3%, which is consistent with what we're getting for the building official side. So I said, okay, 3%. CPI right now is running about 6% to 7%. So if somebody's willing to go for 3%, I think we've negotiated a fairly decent deal. It's going to go high or low, but I think 3% is fairly good. Now, over the past, I know Councilwoman Miles has said NV5 has changed their rate, and that was one of her concerns. That being said, we changed the service levels multiple times with them and changed the terms and scope of what we ask them to do. So that being said, you know, all things being equal, I think we're at a point now where we're moving forward in a constant rate. I would expect limited changes unless we have some dramatic requirements that happen. And if there were some dramatic requirements, my inclination would not be just to use NV5 to make changes, is possibly go out and find something else to do, that extra source or extra issues that we have to deal with. That being said, so say you would have some major infill project or, you know, whatever that case may be, I would rather go out and deal with some, you know, deal with somebody else. So at that time, we deal with them and just use NV5 for what we're using it now. So I'm pretty confident that NV5 will be at the same level, the 3% growth, and I think we've negotiated a rate that's fair and allows them the security of five years. So I think that's a thing. So I would recommend approval, but I'm available to answer any questions.
Council comments? Councilman Wu, sir, do you have any comments?
No, thank you.
Members of the public?
Hearing none, Sina, do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
I have a motion and a second. Steve, please call the roll for a vote.
Councilman Wu?
Yes.
Councilwoman Miles? This is getting tiring.
Yes, yes.
Councilman Pitts?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Rossini?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
Item 14, our next item of new business is regarding the discussion of the street rehabilitation and slurry seal projects list.
So this is Public Works Week. As far as it goes, every year, you know, we come back forward with a list, or every two years, basically, come forward with a list, and then next year we'll do design the following year implementation. So we have two sets of lists that we've gone out based on the PCI, which is pavement condition index that we update. And there are two lists. One is slurry seal, which is the sort of like, people liken it to putting a new coat of paint after you fix all the patches and all that. And then the actual street rehabilitation, which is grinding down to inches, repaving, et cetera. So we've got a list of nine items for the pavement rehabilitation and 11 for proposed slurry seals. And that, again, is something that we're basing on where the need is. So a slurry seal is not going to have the same kinds of damage that we would on a regular road. So I think the key here is we are proposing this list in priority order. So to the extent that funding, for whatever reason in the state budget, you just, you know, a lot of us, we rely on state funds, so, and OCTA funds, we would like to, we'll come back to, obviously, and say, well, we can only go so far or whatever. But based on the volume of pavement that we required, slurry sealed material, and the square footage of what we're doing, this, these, we believe we can accomplish these basically 20 streets. So we would recommend those. We're required every year to provide a list to OCTA of the projects we're going to do. So this will serve as the list that we work from. And it is, you remember the last project, we did Nichols and we've done, you know, Carroll Street, I'm going to draw a blank, the one where she came in regularly and now she...
Churchill and Squares.
Churchill and, yeah. Anyway, so that was the last project. We've completed that all, so we're going to move into our next phase, and we'll incorporate design into our coming year budget, which will be light, and we accumulate the funds, the processes to accumulate funds so we can pay for cash without having to borrow money to do the project. Typically, our projects range between a million and a half to $2 million, and over the course of two years, we can accumulate that kind of money in a budget. We couldn't do a large enough project in $1 million to even attract that. So that's our goal, and that's how we operate. So anyway, I'm available to answer any questions.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions or comments?
I have a question. No, you can go, you were first.
I just have a quick question. So if this is approved tonight, when could these residents expect that the work would be done?
We'll probably talk, I mean, depending on the conditions, weather conditions, et cetera, we'd have, we'd have the design and all that done over the next year, and so it would start probably July 1st of a year from now would be the work being done at that time. I mean, because we have to go out to bid, you know, you go out to bid, and there's a bidding process for design, do the design, do a bidding process for the, for the construction, et cetera. So, but generally, we'd be very, we tried, and like we did last, to keep the public informed, identify the streets that have been done and when their streets might be affected. So the residents, that's part of the process, we notify the residents.
Kind of the same, two questions, a little to add on to Mayor Pro Tem's. So the slurry seal streets, if approved and everything, would happen before the streets for the...
That could potentially happen depending on contract availability of providers. We go out, and then you know the other thing, do we monitor the market to see, because it's an asphalt service type of thing they put on there. So if the rates are dropping, we're going to wait a little bit and sort of hedge our bets and see how long, you know, so it's, that's kind of a little bit, but we can probably move forward on the slurry seal quicker.
Okay.
It would just be a matter of watching to see what's available and, you know, if firms are out there looking for work.
And then second question, just out of curiosity. So on the streets, the 11 streets that are proposed for slurry seal, did they have a PCI index rating?
Yeah, every street in the city has a PCI index. So they're all, every street in the city has a PCI index. So what we do is we assess those streets that probably need heavy work and those that may be graveling, starting to do things like that, or a little bit of alligatoring or things like that, that aren't going to require the same level. And if we do those with slurry seal, we can probably get five to seven years where we have to do the major rehab.
So then these slurry seal streets, it'd be expected that their PCIs are going to be a better number than the ones for the rehab? Okay, so are we, like, they're in the 70s maybe? Do we have an idea?
I think we're close to 80 for the whole city, but I don't know. I mean, that's pretty good, but I don't know. I mean, we have city, we have some that are in the 50s.
Okay.
All right, we have some that, you know, that just have to be done. And it's sort of a case-by-case, and then also, it's a traffic area. If you have a lot of larger trucks going in, some of our cul-de-sacs literally only have trash trucks or mail trucks go through, or residents go through them. So those aren't going to have the wear and tear, and so a slurry seal might be more appropriate for that because you're just not going to get the wear and tear on it.
I guess my concern is just I don't want to fall into a situation again where we budget for a slurry seal and then we have issues with residents coming and saying that they...
We've done a number of slurry seal projects, and I think we've had one situation where that was, you know, one situation where that came up. Typically, I mean, we've had others that have been very successful and people have been very appreciative. Because it actually looks as good as a new street when you see it.
I agree. I, yes, I totally agree. I just want to make sure none of these are actually in that low, low, low category that maybe we should consider moving them.
No, I think if you ask anybody, though, they say their new street needs to be done. So I don't think they're going to say they're, no, don't worry about my street for the next couple of years. They all want something done. But in fairness to them, we've tried to deal with those neediest most soon, and those that are a little less in need, you know, we can hold off and deal with what our budget allows us to do. It is obviously much cheaper to do slurry seal than it is to grind up two inches of pavement and repave, et cetera. A lot cheaper, but the life expectancy is probably three to five years, whereas if you grind everything up, you're probably going to spend in the range of something that's going to last you 10 to 15 years. The other thing is, a street project, slurry seal is probably about $180,000, where we're spending almost $2 million to do grinding of streets, et cetera. So that's order of magnitude of difference.
I think the other consideration too is, I know that staff in these companies prefer to do projects that are close from a staging perspective of their equipment. So we may have a street that's a 77 in one part of the city and another street that's a 78, but that 78 is closer to a bunch of 60s, so they're going to give deference to that 78 as far as the PCI because it's closer to where a majority of the projects are done. So just another consideration so that our residents have transparency on the process. So thank you, everybody, for their comments. Do we have any members of the public that want to comment on this?
No.
All right. No public comment, no further comment by councilmembers unless, Councilman Wu, did you have any questions, sir? Okay, I see a head nod to the negative. We're going to go ahead and take a vote then. If I may have a motion, please, first.
I'll move it.
I have a motion. I have a second. Steve, please call the roll for the vote.
Councilman Wu?
Yes.
Councilwoman Miles?
Yes.
Councilman Pitts?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Rossini?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
Next item, our next item of new business is regarding CIP Trail Improvements Project Contract Award. Steve?
So you recall that we've been talking about our trails for, you know, every year we have to patch up and redo that thing. So we budgeted money this year as a project in our capital improvement program to allow us to go out and start dealing with some of our more specific trails, Unlemon, Mesa, Canyon, Los Flores, those are the ones that probably have the most damage because of runoff, like minor grading, replacing DG and you have to compact it, et cetera. And then they're based, you know, we kind of base it on the conditions of what, what needs it the most, much like with the roads. So anyway, we have met with, we got, we now got estimates, so it's, I'm not going to pronounce, Chilalati will handle projects for about $45,000 a year. And so we are recommending, it's about $135,000 for a three-year thing, which allows us to really move through all of our thing. The key is not just repairing them on a temporary basis, but creating compaction and stuff so so that, you know, the very hilly areas, we don't lose them every year and have ravines, which become basically safety hazards if some of the pedestrians are walking on it. So we'd recommend approval. We have money budgeted for this. So we recommended agreement for Chilali. We have, that is the lowest bid and we'd recommend that you allow us to move forward and we'd spend about 45,000 a year.
Thank you. Council members, any questions? Councilman Wu, sir? He has, it's a negative head wave there. Members of the public on this item, any comments?
No.
All right. May I please have a motion? I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All right. Thank you. I'm abroad. Please call the roll for a vote.
Councilman Wu?
Yes.
Councilman Miles?
Yes.
Councilman Pitts?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Rossini?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
Next item is item 16. We will now discuss the city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the monthly report. It's highlighted there. Mayor Pro Tem Jones and I were, had some clarification of one of the items we're working with, the foundation, I believe we're making some progress there that's since wasn't reported here, but I think we came to an understanding of what was done and not done in the past. But anyway, I think it answered very self-explanatory. I do have to report that by, by code, I'm allowed authority to make administrative adjustments of the zoning to allow approved requests for an adjustment as long as it does not exceed 25% of required rear and side yard building setbacks. So the address on, I'm going to, I'm sorry. They gave me the code, not the address. Oh, 9432 Villa Isle Circa. You were here, Councilwoman, when, or Mayor Pro Tem, when the resident came in, we talked about that. They adjusted, moved back, they were, they were going to have a setback. They decreased the minimum yard setback from 149 to 119. So it's, anyway, it's attached, it's going to be very attractive. They're adding a bedroom to their house. It won't be seen. I think it's a well-moving, well-intended move. I'm just reporting that we, I approved it under that authority. They want, we're trying to move forward on it. They're new, new to the neighborhood and new to the area and they're trying to make a major improvement to the city. So I think it's a good move, but I'm just reporting that for the record.
Thank you. Any questions of Steve? Any comments? All right. Thank you for your report. Next up, we have Mayor and Councilmember Matters Meeting Reports. First up, Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control.
Thank you. So we met Thursday, March 21st, and at the March Board Meeting, we received two presentations. Recently knew Director of Communications, McQuell Jacobs, presented on the 2024 campaign and it's called mosquitosuck.org. So two S's, so mosquitosuck.org. This year, the 2024 campaign will focus on increasing engagement during California Mosquito Week, which is April 14th through 20th, and National Mosquito Week, which is June 20th through 26th. We are participating in this campaign by sharing in the social media posts and encouraging residents to do the same. So I don't know if you guys remember, but I think it was last year or the year before, Villa Park actually won. So all the 34 cities have metrics that we go by and it's a huge competition and everyone in there is very competitive from the truck magnets to social media to, you know, when people give reports to billboards. And so we've won and as a small city, everyone's always trying to, we've beat out cities like Costa Mesa, San Clemente. So want to encourage any residents, if they want to take a picture of a mosquito or a dead mosquito or them tip tossing, take action, to go on to Orange County Mosquito Vector Control on their Facebook or Instagram or Twitter and take a picture, tag Villa Park because we get points and let me tell you, there's a, it's a, it's a big competition. So I'll be doing a lot of that too. And then we have, I think there's an Information Officer Lunch that staff is invited to. I'll, I'll get to that. Hopefully you guys know about that. We've been working with Cosmont Realty. Again, we're readdressing the issue of if we purchase a building or if we stay at the current location and rebuild. So we got a market update from Will Solholt from Cosmont. We reviewed the Orangewood property, which we just went and looked at, and then a Dyer property, which we have not, but just came on the market. The Orangewood property presentation was accompanied by a conceptual design estimate. It's really out of our budget. Based on the sale price and design construction cost, it was determined that Orangewood would not be a feasible option. And the Dyer property just came up and as part of the joint committee, we'll be taking a look at that. As part of the consent calendar, we approved standard items in addition to a change to Policy 29 with computer and I T, basically kind of the same things that everyone always wants to make sure that staff and district employees use the computers in the appropriate way. We had an in-depth discussion on the business item, which was to provide further direction to the staff on the district's new facilities. As part of the joint committee's recommendation, which is budget and finance and building and personnel, we asked staff to look into the actual costs, including operational impacts of building on the district's current property at Haster Street in Garden Grove and continuing to evaluate Dyer and any other property that may come on the market and fits the district needs. Our current district representative, Laura, she's very forward-thinking and wants to make sure that whatever building, whether we rebuild on Haster or we assume a property, some other location, that it will fit the needs for the next 50 years. So future district managers don't have to worry about it. I had requested a motion to go to an R F P for brokerage services. So Cosmont Realty, who's done a great job and been with us ever since 2018, when I very first got on, I was disappointed that the vector control, we lost, we took a vote 14 to 12. I wanted to go to R F P so it was transparent. Some of the board members felt that because they had participated for the last five years, that we would stick with Cosmont. So I lost on that one. There's, we're going to be dealing with some budget workshops, some strategic plans. And then the P I O Lunch and Learn is what I was mentioning, that hopefully our city staff, because that's part of the metric. So you guys have to go because then we'll get points for that. So the communications team will be hosting the Lunch and Learn for Cities and Other Partner Agencies Tuesday, April 9th. So put it in your calendar, Tuesday, April 9th from 11:30 to 1:00. And I'll forward you the registration link. And then on to kind of the meat and bones of this is human case investigation. To date, the district has received nine travel-related dengue cases to investigate and one flea-borne typhus. 2024, we think that there's going to be an increase in travel-related case investigations. And mosquito counts and activity, they're going to increase, especially around the wetlands and especially since we're getting into summer. And then the last thing, because spring means the start of mosquito season, residents that are proactive in eliminating water sources from their property can help reduce the number of mosquitoes throughout the entire summer season. Don't forget to take that picture and tag mosquitosuck.org. And then remember to tip toss, take action. And the very last thing, if anybody's planning on traveling this summer to Brazil, Argentina, Paraguay, there is an increase in countries, these countries where dengue, chikungunya or Zika are endemic. And if you return home and, and are carrying that viral load and then you get bitten by one of our eighties mosquitoes, that then becomes a local transmission. So just beware of where you're going perhaps because Florida right now has reported 186 locally transmitted dengue human infections in 2023. And so Orange County Mosquito Vector Control is diligently working on trying to prevent that from happening here. So that's it. That was a lot. That's it.
Wow. Okay. Any issues or questions with, not to get too political, but things that are going on at the southern border with transmission concerns about that?
Lots, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Thank you for, for those comments. I think we can individually drill down with you on that. We have Orange County Sanitation District up next.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the board meeting and also the administrative committee meeting on the 16th of this month. Most of the conversations are around, centered around the two-year budget preparation. Unlike what we do here, we do it on an annual basis. We do a look forward for two years and budget for the two-year period. We do make adjustments as time goes on in that budget program, but in our board meeting tomorrow night, staff will start to begin to present to us their expenditures for the last year so that we can start to formulate the budget so it can be approved by next year. So a lot of work's going to be done, of course, for the next two or three months on, on the budget itself. I want to note that this is the 70th anniversary of the O C Sanitation District. They're hosting a open house on Saturday, June the 8th, from 9:00 a.m. till 12:00 p.m. to celebrate the 70th anniversary. They're opening their doors to the entire community and encourage everyone to, to come and visit so they can talk about the essential services that we offer the community and so forth. I think it's, and, and the, the cool part is we got a tour as the board of the new headquarters facility there in Fountain Valley, and it's absolutely gorgeous. And I, I can't wait for its opening and I'm hoping that with the 70, it'll coincide with the 70th anniversary with the free tour that's going on that day. So stay tuned for that. And the other thing that we talked a lot about was the O C Sand Retirements and Recruitment. It's interesting, they had a total of 13 employees that retired, representing 277 years of service. So, you know, it's hard to replace, you know, that kind of talent, that kind of experience. And, you know, that they do an amazing job of recruiting. I think they have over 100 recruitments a year on average to maintain the low turnover rate. So very proud of what they've done with regards to that. So very interesting meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for your report. Orange County Fire Authority, that meeting will be this Thursday. So I will incorporate a budget and finance meeting that I went to earlier this month with that report in the month of April. So no report as of now. Orange County Library Advisory Board.
No reports, no meeting.
Thank you. Orange County Unified School District City Schools.
Yes, we did not have a meeting this month, but just really quick, I would like to congratulate Villa Park High School on receiving the 2023 A P Computer Science Female Diversity Award, which celebrates their efforts to engage more female students in computer science. And I applaud Villa Park High School for focusing on preparing our female students for these in-demand jobs. I would also like to congratulate Villa Park resident Sydney Summerdyke on having her softball number retired by Villa Park High School. While at Villa Park, Sydney was recognized as the Orange County Softball Pitcher of the Year in 2022, and she was the Gatorade California Player of the Year in 2021, among other honors. She is currently a student at the University of Arizona, playing for their Division One softball team. So congratulations to Sydney. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Law enforcement advisory, no meeting. Steve, I noticed that you calendared something for Liac. What, when is that next meeting, do you recall, sir? That's okay. July.
They have it July 10th at 5:00 p.m.
July 10th. There we go. So if you're interested in law enforcement related matters and want to come before the Law Enforcement Advisory Committee, again, please give the date and the time.
July 10th, 5:00 p.m.
Thank you much. Villa Park Community Services Foundation.
So we had a meeting last month where the foundation discussed their planning for their various upcoming events. Thank you to Councilman Wu on behalf of the foundation, who decorated City Hall for No Ruze. No Ruze marks the first day of spring in the Iranian and Persian New Year. Then last Saturday evening, the foundation hosted their volunteer recognition event at Sunrise of Orange. It was well-attended. We really appreciated the location and refreshments, which were all provided by the beautiful Sunrise of Orange facility. And congratulations to Mark Koolai for receiving the Volunteer of the Year Award. And as most of you know, Mark is a fixture here in Villa Park and has been volunteering himself for decades, doing everything from the city of Villa Park Halloween Fest all the way to volunteering for our local schools. So congratulations to Mark again on this well-deserved award. And that's my report.
Indeed. Congratulations. Housing Legislative Committee.
No meeting.
Bridges at Kramer Place.
So we had met in January. I gave that report on that, but also mentioned about the bylaws. So as Chair of the Ad hoc Committee for Bylaws, we met on March 8th to discuss basically two things, to revamp the bylaws regarding removal of members and then also attendance. And then the big one, which would be alternates, because right now we can't have alternates. You can go to the public meeting, but nobody can vote. So when people wouldn't show up and we didn't have a quorum, we couldn't do any business. But then also if people didn't show up, we couldn't replace them because we didn't have anything on how to remove them. So there were four of us that worked on this, gave our suggestions with county staff, and I should be getting that back for our next meeting, which is April 24th. It's the Wednesday after the next meeting. So I'll have more to, to report on that.
Thank you. Orange County Older Adults Commission.
Okay, well, this one we got a lot. So there's a, a slide for that. I don't care. Perfect. I would have chosen that one. Okay, so this we're going to put in, in the feeder. It used to be called S C A C, Senior Citizens Advisory Council. We changed the name, it's official now. It's, we call it O C O A C, Orange County Older Adults Advisory Commission, otherwise known as O A C. So for those who care for a frail adult over 60 or an adult with brain impaired conditions, there's Caregiver Resource Center and Orange County Community Services through the Office on Aging has put out this app. So this is the mobile app that can help you or a family member find resources and help getting connected to housing, care, or a plethora of other older adult services. And the Orange County Office on Aging can help. So there's this mobile app, which it's really easy to use. I suggest everyone download it, whether you're the older adult or you're the caregiver of an older adult. And it goes back to their no wrong door policy. So if you need a service and you don't see it listed there, not a problem. You can call 1-800-510-2020 and you speak to somebody one time, tell them what you need, and then they direct you in that location and they're all connected. So then that way, if, if perhaps, you know, I need something and you're the service that I need, instead of me having to give my information again, you will have it at your computer and laptop. So the mobile app, they're really trying to push out. So hopefully everyone can download that. And then the next slide, this one's really important. So that's if you're an older adult and you require services. Now, one of the things opposite in is the caregiver. So the Caregiver Resource of Orange County can assist those individuals that are caring for older adults. And it doesn't have to be that you're a family member, it can be a friend, it can be a neighbor, it doesn't matter. You may not realize that you qualify as a caregiver. So I suggest that, that, you know, we can put this in the feeder as well. People go to get information. And these services include family consultation, assessment, care planning, counseling, support groups, respite and education. Caregiver Resource Center has 11 locations throughout California and all the services are for free. And for that, you can call 800-543-8312. And this is really important because you may not realize it, but when you're the caregiver of an older adult, even just a little respite of being able to go out for two hours, you know, once a week, really helps these people who have to care give for a loved one or a friend. And you can get most any service for free. So this is offered to anybody in Orange County and would really highly recommend that, that people utilize that. And then the big thing is March 8th, we met for our regular meeting and there's no more slides, that's okay. They met for our regular, regular meeting, but we had the, we had the public hearing on the Area Plan on Aging. And the Area Plan on Aging is something that is required by the Orange County Community Services Office on Aging to conduct every four years. And these are, all these programs are funded by the Older Americans Act and Older Californians Act. And all the programs are then administered by the Office on Aging and O A C falls underneath the umbrella of the Office on Aging. So every four years, the area agencies on aging are required to draft and submit an area plan to the California Department of Aging for approval. This public hearing was done on March 8th at Easter Seals. And the purpose of the area plan is to assess the current and future economic and demographic characteristics of older adults in Orange County, to evaluate the existing service system, operations and role, and three, review the mission, goals and objectives of the Office on Aging. So the survey was done. If you guys remember, towards the end of last year, I had mentioned that there was these surveys that they, they wanted people to take. The California Assessment Survey of Older Adults was conducted by the California Department of Aging. It was sent to 5,000 adults in Orange County. It was mailed in English and multiple different languages, a total of 411 completed surveys. The results, which are really important because again, we have to do this in order to continue to get funded by the Older Americans Act and the Older Californians Act. It assessed more than 40 challenges commonly facing older adults. And these challenges were grouped into 15 larger categories. The largest challenges in Orange County was housing, information about older adult services, which is why they've put forth this app, and then healthcare. So with that mass, with that area plan, they've put together the goals for 2428. And the first goal is to inform and educate communities, outreach, strategies, training opportunities, regional events, educational presentations and programs, and then general information and health-specific information. Second goal, to coordinate service delivery and enhance collaborative partnerships, and that's the Aging and Disability Resource Center. The Dale MacIntosh Center is a great resource for people. That's one, like I said, if you're an older adult that needs some sort of, like bar in your shower, the Dale MacIntosh Center will come and install that at no charge. And then, sorry, it's been a long couple of meetings. Continued participation in the development of the Master Plan for Aging. That Master Plan for Aging is statewide and that goes along with the Governor's Master Plan on Aging and the five different goals. So I'm being sent by the Office on Aging to the C 4 A, which is the California Association of Area Agencies on Aging by the Office on Aging in San Jose that they're paying for of Area Agencies on Aging by the Office on Aging in San Jose that they're paying for, May 1st through 3rd, as the representative for OAC. And that conference theme is Aging and Disability Network, The Best Is Yet to Come, and it's going to address a wide range of topics, primarily like we saw with the area plan, getting the information out to older adults. That was one of the things that most adults didn't know where, how to access that information. So really encourage people to download the app, and then the QR code, once you scan it, it'll take you right to the website, so.
Thank you. We will now hear individual councilmember information items. Councilmember Wu, sir.
Thank you. I have the pleasure to attend the OCFA Open House with council, I mean, with Mayor Proton Jones. I personally always enjoy that kind of event, and thanks, huge thanks to Chief. Once again, she was around. I believe this year, they have new equipment that I did not see last year. And also, I definitely enjoyed the maintenance room, looking at those big machines being hoisted up in the air, that's pretty cool. So I enjoyed that event, and also I had attended League of Cities meeting in Anaheim Convention Center, met with two state assemblymen from LA County. You know, there were just more me and great events, so nothing to report from that. The other event I have attended with my wife is Nixon Library. They welcomed President Bush with his, I want to make sure I say it correctly, Portrait of Courage, a Commander in Chief's tribute to America's warriors. So with President Bush, after his retirement from being the President of the United States, he took on arts, become a painter. So he, for him to pay tribute to our veterans, he actually selects many veterans that he make portraits. So all that painting of his is in Nixon Library now until May 19th. I highly recommend everyone to take a look. And President Bush was there to have interview, I mean, more like a one-on-one interview. We all listened, he turned out, he's a really funny guy, and he gave his experience of being the president. One thing that really struck me, what he mentioned still in my head, is the cornerstone and the institution of our country are greater than any one individual. That struck me is just because we, all five of us are here, we are here for the city of Villa Park, not necessarily for our own individual gain or anything else. So he really mentioned that, how he take his presidency, especially he had to deal with 9/11, sending our troops. So that was really heartwarming to hear from him. And again, he's just a funny guy, and, you know, he kind of, there were two veterans that he actually drew the portrait. He even making fun of how the dinner, they sent him, sent both of them all the way in the back, so he kind of making fun of that, how Canadian, seeing the front. So he just is such a nice guy. Unfortunately, we did not personally meet him in a picture with him, but it was a great night. So thank you.
All right. Councilmember Pitts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This month, I attended the OC Fire Open House as well. Appreciate the chief taking us on the tour there. I too saw, we, my wife and I, saw new fire equipment for the airport, and I'm just amazed at the features and what they plan to do with that, with that device, once they get it on the airport, but that's, that's an amazing thing. We also attended the Villa Park Little League Taste of Villa Park, great event, and it looked like it was well-attended. Unfortunately, we had multiple engagements that night, so we couldn't stay very long, but it was, it was nice, very nice. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Miles.
Thank you. So I also attended the Villa Park Little League Taste of VP, which was very well-attended and one of my favorite events in local community organizations. Also, on Monday, I was invited by Sheriff Don Barnes to go tour the new real-time operation center, which should be opening, fully functional opening, I should say, within the next 30 to 90 days. We got a tour of the six-acre building, 120,000 square feet. This is an amazing facility. Sheriff Barnes, forward-thinking about the use of this building, it's top secret, but the Orange County or, yeah, Orange County or KAYAC, which is Orange County Information Assessment Center, did I get that right?
Orange County Intelligence Assessment Center.
Okay, shoot. We got to look at that, which is pretty much like the movies, where you're in these rooms, it's high-tech, there's TVs, monitor screens all over, where everybody can, you can monitor everything. But the big thing about this is, this is going to be the home for the 911 call centers, it's going to be for the O-Kayak Center, it's going to be for tactical teams, different threats, and it's all going to be at this location. It's also, and it's part of the fusion, so there's like this fusion center, O-Kayak, they're all coming together. And then right now, the 911 and emergency operation is up on Loma Ridge facility. The 911 call center will move over to this real-time operation center, and that, that Loma Ridge facility will be used as a backup, but, but it'll still maintain as an emergency operation center should, God forbid, something catastrophic happen. But the technology and, I guess, the resources and the access that's going to happen at this facility is just amazing. It's, it's being used as a national model for other law enforcement agencies across the nation to come and look at, and they have rooms where you can train 300 people, everything from areas for like, if they have to have a major news reporter, or, you know, news agencies come, and very secure, so really impressed by that. That was on Monday. And then, as part of the Public Safety Legislative Committee for League of California Cities, I went to Burbank last, just on Friday, and was at the Los Angeles Marriott Burbank, and was part of a discussion on some of these bills for the public policy, Public Safety Committee. And I have to say, even though, you know, everyone jokes about Villa Park's a small city or whatever, we had a big impact that day. So there are about 22 bills, all a result of Prop 47. These bills are bipartisan, that were being presented to help amend Prop 47 or to change and alter it, and some of the big ones, this is all because of that Prop 47, which was titled, stupidly, Safe Neighborhoods and Schools Act, which it is not. And so originally, League of Cities was going to present the stance that they would pin, pending whether or not they were going to oppose or support. And several of us in that meeting, and this is 120 different people from all over the state, I sat with electeds from Berkeley, from, oh my gosh, Stockton, from areas in San Diego, from towns I've never even heard of, and we all kind of put our foot down and said, this is unacceptable. We, you know, we want to make sure that the state legislators know that we're not going to wait and see if what you say, in order for us to support or not, we're going to say oppose unless amended. And so we had a big, huge uproar on the floor, and fortunately, that, that passed. So now, all these have to get changed to oppose unless amended, because the public safety issue, everyone realizes, is huge with what's going on with Prop 47 and trying to amend it, which you can't really amend unless it goes to the voters. Anyway, so that was a very great day in Burbank, and even though we're little, we have a loud voice. That was it.
Outstanding. Thank you. Mayor Proton.
Yes, so on March 7th, I was absolutely thrilled to be principal for the day at Villa Park Elementary, where I attended and where all four of my kids went to school as well. I got to welcome the kids in the morning, visit classrooms, Read for Read Across America, and supervise the playground. So it was a wonderful visit, and I would like to thank Principal Mrs. Arceo and the incredible VPE staff for being so welcoming. I also attended, as Councilman Wu said, the Orange County Fire Authority Open House. This event is always such a treat, so I highly recommend, if you've never been, to go. I hope they do have it next year. It was amazing to see all the equipment they bring out, the fire demonstrations and all the displays. But I would like to highlight a couple of those. This year, Southern California Edison had a great display on their induction lending program. So if you're interested in getting an induction cooktop, they will actually lend you one for two weeks at no charge. They also have a tool lending library, where you can borrow specialized tools at no charge. So they have hundreds of tools available, from airflow and light meters to carbon monoxide detectors and even fog machines. So we will be putting that information out in the feeder this week, so please take a look when that comes out. I also attended the Orange Unified Public School Foundation's Visual and Performing Arts Showcase at Chapman University. It was amazing to see all these young musicians for the Honor Band, Honor Orchestra perform that night. The amount of talent we have in our community of young people is truly incredible, and I look forward to this being an annual event and partnership between the Orange Unified Public Schools Foundation and Chapman University in the years to come. And then, I already talked about the Villa Park Community Services Foundation Volunteer Recognition Program that I attended, but I would really like to encourage everyone listening to take a look at the foundation and get involved if you can. The foundation acts as our Parks and Recreation Department, and none of our great local events would happen if it wasn't for them. So it's an impressive group of people who truly have the best interests of our community at heart, and it's wonderful to see them in action. So please go to vpcsfoundation.org for more information. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I had the opportunity to also attend Taste of Villa Park, and originally had booked only about an hour because of scheduling conflicts with family, and wound up staying for much longer, because we had a great time. It was, it was a wonderful event, saw some old friends, saw some new friends, saw some constituents who had recently voted against their variance, and we had a wonderful conversation, actually very nice people. It was just a fantastic event, and it really reminded me of what is so special about our city, and I just wanted to thank everybody who put that together and put it on, and those that came and contributed and been on auction items. So that's all I have. I want to say thank you for everybody for this month's attendance reports, and I think that's it. We, now we will adjourn until the next regular city council meeting on April 23rd, 2024, 6:30 p.m. Thank you for participating this evening. Have a good evening and stay safe.